We'll call it order tonight's Committee of the Whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for September the 20th, 2022. The City Council should have the minutes from the September 6th Committee of the Whole. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
If I'm approval.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Industrial Development Board Mayor Pro Tem Whitten.
Yes, sir. We have three vacancy terms begin October 10, 2022, and October 9, to October 9, 2028. We have incumbents Rod Kater, who's served one partial term, Martie Moseley, who's served one full term, and Doug Watson, who's served two full terms. For the position of Rod Kater for one partial term, I'd like to nominate Rod Kater for a full term.
Second.
All right. Have a motion in a second for Rod Kater. Is there any discussion or comments? All right. All in favor of Mr. Kater, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
For the position that Martie Moseley holds, serving one full term, I'd like to nominate Martie Moseley for a second term.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for Martie Moseley. Any discussion or comments? All right. All in favor of Martie Moseley, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We'll confirm that later on the agenda.
And for the seat helped by Doug Watson, who's served two full terms. First, I'd like to thank Doug Watson for his service and continued service to our city. I would like to nominate Jim Bustin.
Second.
Have a motion in a second for Jim Bustin. Any comments or questions?
I would also like to nominate someone, please. I'd like to nominate Mr. Walt Bowie.
Second.
All right. Have a motion in a second for Mr. Bowie. All right. We'll start with Mr. Bustin. Any comments or questions or discussion?
I would just like to state that having recently retired as a city manager, that Industrial Development Board is a board that is, does a lot of outreach and represents our city. And Jim Bustin has great knowledge of the inner workings of our city, what industries are looking for when they're coming in this direction. And I think that he would make a good, would be a good asset for the, for the board.
Ms. Whitten, anyone else? Or Mr. Bustin?
Certainly, I wanted to say thank you to Doug Watson for serving for 12 years on this board. Doug was an outstanding city manager for the City of Auburn, and he provided a valuable asset as the city continued its recruiting and expansion efforts in our industrial park. And we thank him for doing that. I certainly concur with Ms. Whitten's nomination of Mr. Bustin. I think he can play some of the, I believe he will play some of the same roles that Mr. Wa, Dr. Watson played as far as having a clear and intuitive understanding of our community and what makes our city work. He's got great relationships with different, with industries in Auburn currently. And it's my belief he'll be a great asset in our continuing relationships with our current industries and helping us attract further industries with good jobs in the future.
All right. Any other comments, Mr. Bustin? All right. Mr. Bowie, Kelly?
Thank you very much. I encouraged Mr. Walt Bowie to apply for this position. We're very fortunate to have a talented and highly accomplished engineer who has chosen Auburn as his retirement home. He's the former president of Yalista Integrated Solutions and Yalista Aviation Incorporated in Huntsville, Alabama. And Yalista is a native Alaskan firm, so they have attracted talent from all over the place. In that duty, in those duties, he oversaw the execution of multi-billion dollar contracts. Mr. Bowie is uniquely qualified to provide us a unique industry position, an industry viewpoint, to complement the institutional knowledge that we have just confirmed through the reappointment of two incumbents. So institutional knowledge is really not a, not an issue, not a shortfall on the board whatsoever. He has a successful history of implementing facility expansion plans, and that includes arranging financing and providing significant investments in local and surrounding communities. As part of his presidency at Yalista, he's able to gain airport board approval north of Huntsville. And they were able to build a large advanced capability aircraft integration and hangar facility on airport property. So he has experience in dealing with municipal properties and with corporate expansion to, on municipal properties. It's very similar to what we do here with our office parks. I really see no need to emphasize and, and bring up additional talent. I know Mr. Bustin served the city well, but I believe there is sufficient room on the IDB for incorporation of new talent. And we're very fortunate to have Mr. Bowie put his name in the, in the pot for, for that. And I've seen no shortfall whatsoever if we were to choose he, him over Mr. Bustin for this position. Thank you.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Griswold. Anyone else would like to speak for Mr. Bowie?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Bowie is a resident of Ward 6. He's contacted me directly. I've gotten to know Mr. Bowie over the last six months or so. I echo everything that Councilman Griswold has said about his qualifications. I also would like to amplify the contacts that Mr. Bowie would bring from his defense experiences. And I think he would provide some extra diversity to the, to the current board. Thank you, and I'll be supporting him.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, into the discussion, I believe this will be somewhat of a split vote. So I think the best thing to do, city managers, do a hand. We'll do this by, vote by hand.
Take one at a time.
We'll take one at a time. So all in favor of Mr. Jim Bustin, if you please raise your hand. Six?
There's six.
Okay. All right. Mr. Bustin will be confirmed later on in the agenda. All right. Questions for tonight's agenda from the city manager? Okay. Anything for us, Ms. Crouch?
No.
Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
I moved.
All right. We'll adjourn the Committee of the Whole. We'll move right into our regular agenda. It's 6:03. And I'll call the order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for September the 20th, 2022. Certainly welcome all of you that are in our audience tonight. Welcome all those that are listening on the radio and that are watching through live stream or YouTube. Lindsay, with the roll call?
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Hovey?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Anders?
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the Committee of the Whole, the City Council reappointed Rod Kater and Martie Moseley to the Industrial Development Board and appointed Jim Bustin to a new term on the Industrial Development Board. And we certainly appreciate Mr. Walt Bowie for putting his name and applying for this opportunity as well. Under Mayor's announcements tonight, I do have a number of things. I want to thank the Auburn Beautification Council, their annual wine and cheese gathering was last night, and it was a good time to remember all the great things that that organization does for our city. They work hand in hand with a number of our departments here in the city, and members of our departments have served on their board and actually served as leadership within the Auburn Beautification Council. This is the organization that, they'll be having a fall plant sale very soon, and they take care of our beautiful hanging baskets in downtown. I want to thank all the people at least Got Academy for feeding our first responders breakfast today and celebrating all their good work. Thank them for doing that. You might have seen on October the 3rd, we'll have a small ceremony. They'll celebrate all the history of Felton Little Park. Those of you who are new to Auburn might not realize that that is Auburn's oldest park. Mr. Felton Little sold that piece of land for a dollar to the city a long, long time ago. It has served many uses in our community, and we're going to put some attention to that and talk about its history here in a couple of weeks. I want to thank our folks at the SGA for a voter drive today. It got wet, but they tried hard. And I stood with them for about 30 minutes before the rain, surprising rains came. But I appreciate their continued enthusiasm for, you know, encouraging our students to be a part of the political process from a voting standpoint. And this was trying to get kids ready, kids, excuse me, I apologize for that, trying to get students ready for the November general election. Tonight, you'll see that our City Council members have gold ribbons on, and gold is the color for childhood cancer. Recently, I was invited to, to present a proclamation naming two children from our community, Nova May and Mason Woodson, who are fighting cancer at Children's Hospital in Birmingham. We named them, recognized them as the Childhood Cancer Ambassadors for 2022. Childhood cancer is a very tender situation that affects too many of our children and certainly our children here locally. And that's why we're wearing these gold buttons tonight. Last week, the Rain Culinary Arts Center had its grand opening. And a number of us from up here were over at the ceremony. What a fantastic asset that is going to be for our community. It is going to give people another reason to come to Auburn and spend a long weekend or spend time with us. We certainly are excited about all the potentialities there. I want to remind everybody in our community, you've been reminded that this is a double homecoming week. And we usually do those one week at a time, but not this year. We're going to do them back to back. So there'll be parades on Thursday afternoon and Friday afternoon. Please keep that in mind as you go about your business for this weekend as we get ready for, for homecomings. On the front page of the paper today, there was some recognition of an outstanding young person that graduated from Auburn High School last year. His name's Liam Calhan. And he was recognized as the outstanding recruit, outstanding Marine recruit, and was recognized with an award called the Chesty Puller Award. There was a nice article in Opelika Auburn News. I encourage you to go and see this. He'll be coming to Auburn and majoring in civil engineering and will be a member of the Marine Reserves. And we're certainly proud of his efforts being recognized as the, the top leader in 600 young people who, who were going through Marine basic training. And speaking of veterans and all things to do with military, we're excited today. We were just informed that the First Lady of Auburn University, who is actually a veteran, Ms. Tracy Roberts, will be our speaker for our Veterans Day ceremony on November 11th this year. And we're excited to hear what she's got to say. I ask all of you to put that on your calendar, November 11th, at 10 o'clock at our Veterans Memorial here up the street. And that's all I've got. Anybody else on the council have anything they'd like to say tonight? Any announcements?
I would like to announce the community ward meeting for Ward 1 on next Monday, September 26th, at the Boykin Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And I will be actually doing an update on some of the improvements in Ward 1. So if anyone would like to come out, you're welcome to, to attend.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sure. I was invited to a luncheon in Opelika this week for Circles of Opelika, which is a nonprofit focusing on educating the public on how to set financial goals and become literate with finances in general. It's a great ground, grassroots organization. It's titled Circles of Opelika, although it is open to anybody within, within the Twin Cities, so Auburn residents. If you're interested in learning a little bit about setting these type of financial goals, you can find them on Facebook at Circles of Opelika, and they're terrific, terrific up and coming group.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Anyone else have an announcement?
There is a public meeting on the 27th for the-
That's correct.
MLK streetscape.
Four to 6:00 PM.
Four to 6:00.
Boykin Auditorium.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move ahead to Auburn University Communications.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you all again. So to start us off, as the mayor mentioned, we had our voter registration drive today. It ended up being a really successful event despite the rain. We moved inside and, you know, it was a little slow to start because of that. But by the time I left, we were having people come up and scan our QR codes every 30 seconds. And we got several out of state students to register to vote in Alabama, so we're really enthusiastic about that. So thank you very much for coming. And also thank you for not rolling your eyes at me when I asked you if you stayed for the entire Penn State game.
It's a fair question.
We had the same answer. So anyway, another thing, so another SGA related update. My team, which is myself, Anna, and Judson, are putting together a city updates video series on the SGA Instagram to help get information that is conveyed at councils and at Downtown Merchants Association meetings conveyed more clearly to students. So we're really excited about that. We're watching that next week. You know, just a little short video for students to watch and stay caught up on things so that they don't have to necessarily come to these meetings or watch the live stream, because we know they don't do that. And then another thing, so the Office Inclusion, the Office of Inclusion and Diversity will offer four new grant programs starting in the fall to help promote Auburn's goal of increasing diversity on Auburn's campus. And we're excited about the Auburn family expanding in that way. Also, Auburn and the United States Army have signed a 10-year natural resource, signed a deal for a 10-year natural resource management program, and it will serve eight different military bases. It's going to focus on things like forest management, endangered species surveys, and other similar studies. And we are grateful that the military trusts Auburn with such an important initiative. That's all from me. Please come to the homecoming parade and enjoy it. War Eagle.
Good. Thank you, lady. All right. This time, it says Citizens Communications on tonight, items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. There are a number of things on our agenda tonight that do have public hearings. If the item you'd like to speak to us tonight does have a public hearing, we'd ask that you wait till then to address the City Council. Okay? Anyone? Okay. We'll move forward with city managers. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to.
Okay.
My name is Dr. Deja Ruddock. My address, I live in Opelika. So it's 4150 Academy Drive, number 236. Tonight's agenda includes a request to sign a new contract between Auburn Public Library and Horseshoe Bend Regional Library. My name is Dr. Deja Ruddock, and as the Regional Library Director, I wish to give some context and explain why Auburn's continued inclusion is so crucial to our library. Though we've gone through name changes, the Horseshoe Bend Regional Library has been providing library service to counties in Alabama for 80 years. And Auburn Public Library has been part of our system since they opened in 1960. While tradition does not equal obligation, it does mean that your library and our regional system have mutually benefited from our association for 62 years. Though we have both grown significantly during that time, I feel strongly that there's still reason to keep, to keep on together. As part of their inclusion in our system, Auburn Public Library and several other libraries provide us with half of their yearly state aid. This year, that amounts to $45,846 from Auburn. And this is a significant amount of money, and it's a significant amount of money for us. It's about 10% of our total operating budget. In fact, because state aid is based on population, Auburn's state aid is almost equal to the state aid from all other libraries in our regional system combined. This state funding, which Auburn has so generously shared with us for more than half a century, has done incalculable goods, as it's been routed through our regional library, redistributed in part to smaller libraries in our system, and used to benefit all of our outreach patrons in four counties. So Auburn Public, I'm sorry, Horseshoe Bend Regional Library does two things of significance. We support 10 libraries in our regional system. This includes Auburn Public Library, but it also includes all state-aided public libraries in Lee, Talaposa, Elmore, and Cusa Counties. That includes the Adelia M. Russell Library in Alexander City, Dadeville Public Library, Eclectic Public Library, Goodwater Public Library, Millbrook Public Library, Opelika, Rockford, Tallahassee Community Library, and Watumpka. If you recognize the names of those towns, you know that many of these libraries are in extremely small, underserved rural areas. Not all libraries are as passionately and generously funded as Auburn's. To be perfectly frank, the entire yearly budget of some of these libraries is equal to or significantly less than the amount of state aid Auburn shares with us. I won't name names, but one of these libraries has a total operating budget of about $26,000. That includes salary, building, everything. So these are small libraries, but they're mighty forces in their communities. They provide books and electronic resources with the total combined circulation of almost 350,000 items a year. That was last year. They have computer labs for some of them. The internet in the library is the only library that the town, that people in the town can access. They run story times. They have ukulele lessons. They do book clubs and game clubs and all kinds of things in their, in their communities. Just like Auburn, they're the center of their towns. When we redistribute state aid, we give them thousands of dollars of more than they would otherwise have. And we also support them as a regional library. They're often run by passionate librarians who make little more than minimum wage. And they rely on Horseshoe Bend Regional Meetings, my personal guidance as the regional director, and connection with other directors like Tyler to guide them in best practices. The other part of what we do is outreach. So we are a bookmobile and outreach library of ourselves. We run a bookmobile and outreach fan. We now go to 82 stops throughout all four counties. And we have a wonderful bookmobile librarian. For some of our patrons, Peggy Tuck is the only person that they see all week. And we serve homebound individuals, people in nursing homes, a bunch of daycares, homeschool families, and anybody else who needs items delivered directly to them. I've seen Auburn's generous yearly budget, and I understand that upcoming plans include funding for outreach vehicles and a new outreach librarian. To some extent, this will make the outreach we provide in Auburn city limits obsolete. But just beyond your city limits, we've done and will continue to do a world of good. When it comes down to it, I realize that Auburn Public Library does not read, need Horseshoe Bend Regional Library. But let me be perfectly clear, regional library, our regional library needs Auburn Public Library. If they withdraw from our, if they withdraw from our arrangement despite our best efforts, it's likely that our 80-year regional library will crumble. And the snowball effect of that crumbling would deal a terrible blow to the libraries in our system and the literacy of our state. The state's adult illiteracy rate is 15%. Our service area includes 2,500 square miles of Alabama. If library service in that area dissolves, the impact would be profound. The City of Auburn can help us keep that from happening. And I urge you, with the weight of 59,256 total regional library patrons behind me, to carry forward this 60-year relationship between our two libraries and sign the contract you'll have before you tonight. Thank you, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? There'll be an opportunity for the council to remove this item for the agenda if we'd like to ask some further questions. I know Mr. Whitten is prepared to potentially answer some of those. All right. Anything else? Okay. Now we'll move on to the city managers' communications.
Mayor, under City Managers' Communications, I'd like to have the announcement of two vacancies on the Building Board of Adjustments for terms that begin November 3rd, 2022, and end November 2nd, 2026. There will also be three vacancies on the Tree Commission for terms that begin November 8th, 2022, and end Septem, or sorry, and end November 7th, 2025. Our next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda and deal with that item individually?
I do. Yes, ma'am. 8G? Is that right? 8G?
8G.
G. G. I'd like to remove 8D10, please. Anyone else? Everybody good? Okay. All right. We'll start off with 8D9.
8D9. Item 8D9 authorizes a renewal of the Horseshoe Bend Regional Library membership agreement and authorizes Horseshoe Bend Regional Library to retain 50% of the city's annual aid allocation from the Alabama Public Library Service.
Oof approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Crouch, I just would like for you to reiterate some of the things that our speaker just communicated to us. This is a pass-through program, correct?
That's correct. And I'll have our library director speak to this. We'll go ahead and get your questions out, and we'll, we'll go from there that you know of right now. I think one of the important notions is, she touched on, we, we did fund an outreach vehicle of our own coming up, and that is a huge service that library director wouldn't, will speak to, that they're providing. But one of the key things is, this is also state pass-through dollars. I'd like to reiterate, and Tyler will correct me if I'm wrong, that this hasn't come to the council before, because there, I think, you know, we have several council members that have served multiple terms that said, I haven't seen this before. That's correct. We have, under Tyler's leadership, have corrected a few things that the library board, unbeknownst to them, should not have been the approving authority on, and this is one of them. This is you. And so that is why it's before you for the first time you're seeing this. But I think it's absolutely appropriate at this time to discuss exactly what, where do these funds come from and how are they utilized? Tyler can speak to the services that are provided to us and what that looks like moving forward. And I think that's a big decision point for you moving forward. As you heard, a lot of the services they provide will be providing on our own, but also there's a big reliance on this funding for other areas in our region. Tyler?
So for us, as, as Megan was saying, currently, we are relying on the Horseshoe Bend Regional Library to provide monthly bookmobile stops to a variety of places in Auburn, including daycares and other facilities of that nature. But as the council has been very generous with the library going into fiscal year '23, including the outreach fan, the additional programming specialist, we are increasing services in that area. And we hope to be in very good shape with outreach as we move into the spring and summer of '23. So we do plan to take over those stops in terms of services needed in Auburn. But again, there is the issue of the reliance on the surrounding area.
Tyler, can you speak to the funding, though? It's, it's pass-through state funding that's coming to us, and 50% of it's allocated back to Horseshoe Bend, correct? It's not just coming from the taxpayers of Auburn, this, this funding.
That's correct. This is funding that's approved by the legislature at $1.19 per capita in fiscal year '23. It was $1.13. It's going up. And if we are a member of a collective, then our state aid goes to that collective. They retain 50%, and they pass the remainder to us in four quarterly payments. If we are not a member of a collective, the state aid comes directly to the City of Auburn to be used here.
And Tyler, can you also explain the agenda refers to, if you are going to withdraw, you have to do so by July 1st. Is that still applicable?
That's correct. And that is, that is a guideline set down by the Alabama Public Library Service. They ask that if we are going to change our membership, whether we're in or out of a collective, that they would like to know that before or on July 1st so that they can correctly allocate state aid for the coming fiscal year, which also starts for them October 1st. So if we announce by July 1st that we'd like to withdraw, then they would plan to send all of the funds to us directly, as opposed to sending them to the regional library, which would distribute them.
So theoretically, it is too late for fiscal year '23?
That's right, unless we receive some kind of special dispensation to withdraw this year. We would have to face that with the Public Library Service in Montgomery.
Any other questions for Tyler? I don't want to be the only one to ask.
Is this tied to item 8D2? Is this the same source of funds?
Is this the same source of funds?
The grant funding, different pots of money?
No, sir. That, that is a Library Services and Technology Act grant that we applied for to enhance our holdings at the Boykin Community Center. It's a separate initiative.
Okay. Well, even though this doesn't directly benefit Auburn, I believe our workforce within Auburn is drawn from our surrounding counties, so I see this as beneficial to, to near-term and future workforce improvement. So I'll be supporting this.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So will the city council be seeing this renewal every year going forward, or is it a multi-year type contract?
The contract that's in the agenda tonight is a five-year contract, which is what Horseshoe Bend typically requests, but I imagine that would be up to this body, how you handle that going forward.
We would have to look at the specifics of the contract, and, and I, we would have to double-check. There's likely a withdrawal clause that would allow it. I think what's important to me is even until, you know, Mr. Witten and I have had a lot of discussions about this, and this was, as he stepped into the director role, we have been, we mainly, Tyler, has been doing a lot of work to get some things to the council. This, this council, unlike a lot of cities in Alabama, the library is directly funded by the city. A lot of libraries are independent from the city. And one of the things is, there is, it is almost unusual to have a general fund, fund as much as we do. We have friends of the library. We have other, other funding sources, but it, this community has long been committed to education, and the library is, is part of that, and the council's been staunch about that for many years. And so one of the things that we've been looking at is to be sure that things are going before the council, since you vote to fund the library every time we do the biennial budget, also that you are making some high-level decisions about this. So we would have to look if there's a withdrawal clause or not, Tyler.
And that withdrawal clause is in the Alabama Public Library Service rules and policies. So even though this is a five-year agreement, the libraries receiving state aid do have a yearly opportunity to change whether they are in a collective or not.
And I have one other question. In terms of your operating budget, does this money factor into it at all?
We use state aid funds, the fifty percent we receive, to expand the ebook collection, typically. If we were to receive more, we could rethink that, but it works well to use that for ebooks because they are expensive relative to physical materials.
Tyler, this might not be a question for you, and it might be a question for our previous speaker, but how would these regional, smaller rural libraries replace this money if we were to not be a part of this agreement?
They, they would, I could definitely say they would have a difficult time doing that. They, they rely on the funds, as, as Dr. Riddick said.
Anyone else with a question, comment? Okay. We do have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item eight, D, ten, authorizes a two-year contract with Lee County Humane Society for animal sheltering services. The contract amount of two-hundred-and-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars has been established for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three and an amount to be negotiated for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, which will be based on the city's pro-rata share of animals submitted to Lee County Humane Society.
Move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Griswold, I believe you asked to have this removed. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. I know during our budget discussions, we had some discussion about the possibility of increasing our contribution to the Humane Society. I just wondered, is this, how does this compare with what we've done in the past?
So I'll have Katrina Cook speak to this. If I remember the discussion correctly, we had clarified that, you know, the animal sheltering services fees that we are paying is pro-rata based on what, what services were provided in the, in the last year. So there isn't a, a formula for an extra ask of funds, per se. Katrina?
That's correct. We pay our seven-day whole fee, which is a hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty cents per animal that's taken in. So whether it's by our animal control officers or by any member of the public that lives in Auburn, we pay that portion.
And how is that amount determined? That dollar seventy, whatever?
That is determined by the, the shelter itself. So they assess each animal, and they determine what each animal needs. So there's shots, there's, uh, pills, and a number of pharmacy and vet care for each animal that's there to make sure that they're not sick or injured in their process while they are taking care of them. So that seven-day whole is a basic twenty-dollar a night, and then those other funds come from the prescriptions that are given to each animal.
And, and I'm assuming since the Humane Society is, is a party to this contract, that they're comfortable with that amount per animal?
This is the amount that they submitted to us.
Okay. Thank you.
And Katrina, we've not had other requests for funding from them.
We have not had any other requests for funding from them.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for either Ms. Cook or the city manager? Certainly, Katrina, I really appreciate all the great work that Lee County Humane Society does on behalf of this city. We create a lot of work for them in our community, and they do it with a smile, and they're active, and are always positive on social media, and they have, they're always raising money and awareness to our community. So, and I know your department, and you're the primary contact with them, so please tell them thank you for all their hard work.
I sure will. We would not be able to do our jobs without them.
No question.
So thank you for saying that.
Yeah. Okay.
And they're always looking for volunteers.
Always.
Thank you. Absolutely. Great point. All right. Anything else? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, G, authorizes the execution of a settlement agreement in the opioid lawsuit with, and this particular settlement involves McKesson and Jansen, also known as Johnson and Johnson.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. I ask for this to be removed. Ms. Crouch, I'd just like to get a general explanation for our audience and our community what's going on with this.
So I'm going to give, in non-attorney speak, my lens, and then I will ask both the city attorney, Rick Davidson, and then our outside counsel, Christina Crowe, who's been handling this, to, to bring that up from a legal perspective. But overall, several years ago, there was a memo in your packet, the city council, this city and many cities in Alabama were asked to join in an opioid lawsuit. The state has been pursuing pharmaceutical companies, as many states, and, and national suits have been filed. This is the first settlement agreement I'm bringing forward to you. I wouldn't bring it forward, or suggest it to the city, even though we've joined in this, and I think it's all but four jurisdictions. Is that right?
Five.
Five. In Alabama, there are over ten thousand, is that right? Are part of this suit, and I think the key thing with these funds are, if we were going to receive funds from an opioid suit, could we use the funds? And there are a number of public safety things that we're already doing that are eligible, the full settlement agreements are in your packets, and they're on the website for the public to view. That is a hundred percent of them. There isn't any other document. And I think it was important to just understand that we're, we're joining in, but we're also joining in in a manner that will allow some funding to go for some prevention and/or response when people do overdose or have, have issues. And so I will have, any further questions or information our legal counsel would like to provide. And again, this is Christina Crowe.
Thank you, Ms. Crouch. Ms. Griswold.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
No problem. And thank y'all for participating in this litigation. I think it is very important for the people of the state of Alabama to address the opioid epidemic and to try to come up with effective ways to reduce the effect it's having on our communities.
Good. Any questions for Ms. Crowe? Anything? Okay. Well, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments or questions, city manager? Okay. All right.
Let me make clear to the public, this was the topic of the special session. Is that correct?
We cannot discuss our topics of executive session. That was just for pending litigation.
I can't confirm or deny that, Mr. Griswold.
Aye.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved.
Ready for ordinances?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Under ordinances this evening, item nine, A, one, is a request from Matt Cobb on behalf of AU Alliance LLC to annex approximately seven-point-nine-zero acres of property located on the north side of Beehive Road and west of Auburn Technology Park West for a project known as Sonic Tools. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its August eleventh meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll lend your ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? All right. Any comments or questions? Okay. Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item nine, A, two, is a request from Matt Cobb on behalf of AU Alliance LLC to rezone approximately nine acres from rural to industrial for property located on the north side of Beehive Road and west of Auburn Technology Park West for a project known as Sonic Tools. Planning commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of six to three at its August eleventh meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll lend your ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing a hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, we ask that you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay. Lindsey, with the vote, roll call.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Ovi?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item nine, A, three, is a request from TJ Johnson of Holland Homes on behalf of Scott Hanson, Sarah Hendricks, and Hanson Grimes Land LLC to pre-zone approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-six-point-two-seven acres from rural to limited development district for property located at nine-four-three Lee Road fifty-seven, also known as Willis-Turk Road, and this property is also along Wimberly Road for a project known as The Stables. The planning commission recommended denial of this request by a vote of eight to one at its August eleventh meeting. The applicant has requested that this item be postponed to December sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll lend your ordinance and ask unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion seconds. Anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Okay. Go ahead and open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, we're voting on a postponement, correct?
Is that correct?
No, you are not voting on a postponement. To clarify, the applicant is requesting this. That would be highly unusual in terms of, postponements typically come when the council needs information or has requested information they cannot receive to make a decision. That flows a little differently than planning commission when requests are made there. And the reason it flows differently is, the zoning ordinance says you have sixty days between planning commission and city council to act on zoning requests unless you have a reason to postpone them. And so it's an unusual request to postpone something this far along. The applicant also has the opportunity to withdraw and return to planning commission if they would like to provide additional information. So it's not, it's not a normal protocol to extend something that many months way outside of the sixty days unless the city council members themselves have a reason they need to do so.
So if the city council does not have a reason to do this, then we cannot consider the postponement?
That's up to you, but in, in talking with our legal counsel, there was a previous case that, you know, wanted to kind of postpone indefinitely due to, due to the sixty-day rule, and I was advised by the city attorney that because of the sixty-day rule in there, their preference is unless you have something that a member of this body needs, a piece of information where you're not prepared to make a decision, or we cannot provide to you at this time, then you postpone. But it's unusual to postpone something several months, more than two full months away. Their stated reason is they want time to acquire sanitary sewer easements for gravity sewer. There are a lot more things going on with this than gravity sewer.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Ms. Crouch, you and I have had numerous discussions about this.
Sir.
And it is apparent that the city is not going to be prepared to move forward in this area due to infrastructure and things of that nature anytime in the near future.
That's correct. This is, is in the land use plan designated as rural, and we have made zero plans for infrastructure in this area.
If we were to put it off to July, December, the city, city is still not going to be ready to move forward.
That's correct.
However, I do think this would, would have been a great project, and I think it's coming eventually. But I would encourage, and I don't know if it's too late for this to happen or not, I would encourage the applicant to remove it themselves from the agenda tonight, if that's still possible, and work with the city to make this come to, make this happen in, in the, in the future when the city is prepared to, to move out that far. It's a, this is a problem that any city would be glad to have, develop, and, and it's a great, I think it's, in the future will be good. And, and I hate this to be where I can't support it moving forward tonight because I'm, I'm big about property rights and things of that nature, but I just, unfortunately, the city is just not ready for that type of development at, at that far out. I do think if, if it were taken, it could be taken off the agenda tonight by the applicant and, and work on it for the next six months to a year or whatever, I think you'd have a good chance at maybe getting something done in the future, because the city could work with the applicant and maybe make something happen. But like I said, it's a great problem for the city to have, but the city is just, everyone knows I'm pro-development, giving people, especially single-family dwellings, but it's just, the city is just not there yet. You know, I've talked about it and talked about it to no end, but I, I just, I would rather than pull it tonight, if that's still possible, Ms. Crouch, and if they want to do that. If they don't, we'll move forward with it.
It's certainly up to the applicant.
Sure. So if that were to happen, if the applicant made that determination, but could they make that request during the public hearing?
They can make the request whenever they wish. There's also an important notion in the zoning ordinance that says, there's also planned development district action that, that follows on this. If you have, have made a decision on that, if you've decided, voted one way or the other on it, once you've made a decision on it, you have to wait twelve months to come back. If, if it's withdrawn, which again, the applicant has a right to continue or not continue, that's up to them, there is no such ticking clock. They can come back at any time by going to the planning commission.
Okay. So, help me if I want to get this right. So the city manager and the staff have advised us that postponement is really not, is not a tool that can be utilized here because of the sixty-day.
I mean, ultimately, if you want to utilize, I am telling you, you've been cautioned, but that is up to you. You are the governing body. You can absolutely make that decision. It is highly unusual for a lengthy postponement when the applicant is asking for more time, not the governing body. That, that is, that is my response to that, but if, if this is what you want to do, that is certainly your call.
So for, just for extra clarification, the applicant has a choice, has made a choice to postpone, but a request of postponement?
Correct.
Or the other choice would be to withdraw?
Or withdraw, or you can move forward and act on these agenda items. The 60-day rule was put into place where it has to go. We used to have some applicants that would sit things six, nine, 12 months between Planning Commission and city council, waiting on things to happen. And, and for us, we need things to move forward. We have processes we follow, we have files to maintain, and if you're not ready, and I'm not saying that's the case of this applicant, generally speaking, why the rule was, was made was if you're, you're not ready to move forward to the city council with something, who is the final arbiter, then we should wait to submit until you are. In this case, the applicant has provided information and they've, they have met with staff and provided information, but where we are challenged is this area is slated to be rural in the land use plan all the way to 2030. We're not in 2030, and we have made no plans. Water is Lochepoca Water, they've said they can serve it, that, that's fine, but there's a whole area out here, and if this whole area were to, to change to this style of zoning, Mr. Cummings, how many, how many lots could somebody theoretically generate out there?
Well, if you continue this, this type of zoning, it, it could grow to anywhere from 1,200 to 4,000 lots in time.
In this whole area that is slated rural, and that's where our concern is, we have not studied this for denser development at this time, and our land use plans and all infrastructure plans have all suggested this be rural for the time being. And so we also have another 2,300 or so vacant platted lots in Auburn. They're either vacant or under construction, so we've got a lot of inventory going. And how many acres do we have, Scott, that could still be developed?
Uh, I believe that's roughly about 10,000 acres.
That's already entitled to be developed in some way or another from a zoning perspective, and that is why we do a land use plan and infrastructure plan. So that's, that's where staff is coming from on this, but certainly you are the governing body and this is solely your decision.
If we, if we put it off, just make a motion, put it off in December, then them put, them pulling it, their option to have, they gotta go start all over then. They gotta wait a year.
The year is typically from the Planning Commission application process. It wouldn't be, you know, as, as long of a year, but again, waiting until December, I can tell you, staff is not going to have any, very few answers for you more than we have today about, about a project. The other thing that you'll see in further actions, which aren't this agenda item, we've prepared no development agreement for a planned development district. Why have we not prepared one? Because this is so far out of our planning range in terms of what we were expecting that we have made no plans for a development agreement because we're not ready with any information because we were not expecting this area to develop to this level of density. We're expecting it to be three-acre lots.
I don't know if advantage is the right word, but I, I want to make it clear so they can understand, I can understand as well. If we don't pull it off and it, and it's denied in December and it's not passed, they gotta wait till the Planning Commission date that just occurred, it's come back in. If we do pull it, if they do pull it off, they can bring it back up anytime.
That's correct. Mr. Foote?
I believe for clarification, it's 12 months from the date of denial, which would be from the city council.
Mr. Foote, I believe it is the, the date of application based on the Hamilton Place situation.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we'll have to look. I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me and you can look that up in the, in the plan development. I think it's from when the Planning Commission first considered it.
Okay, but the 12 months is, can be waived if they have a significant change. Is that correct? We've recently done that with the property behind Publix on Moore's Mill.
That is at the sole discretion of the Planning Commission.
So, but that's not a hard and fast 12 months?
It is a hard and fast 12 months unless their Planning Commission deems a change and Mr. Foote is pulling the zoning ordinance language right now.
But if the Planning Commission determines there's a significant change, they can come back sooner than that, or the option is pull it all together, they can come back whenever they choose, when they're, when they're ready. Is that? And they would have to start over.
That's correct.
Start over with the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Which what that ultimately means, not just Planning Commission's got to be re-advertised, not only in the newspaper, but the adjoining property owners have to be noticed again.
So we, so we've been asked to postpone until December the 6th, which we've been advised that that's, we need to do that carefully, consider that carefully. Or we can open the public hearing and we can hear what the applicant might have to say. Withdrawal is certainly an option for them, as Councilman Dawson has spoken too, or we could just handle this as business tonight and, and vote it up or down. Is that?
Real quick, Mayor.
I'm trying to simplify everything so we can move forward. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Foote, did you locate that?
Yeah, I believe what we're talking about is it has to do with the PDD and it has to do with master development plan. So in section 50504, reapplication if denied, if the request for a master development plan approval is denied, the matter cannot be reopened or the subject of a new application for at least a year. That's why I was referring to the city council date because the Planning Commission just makes a recommendation.
If one of us were to deny unanimous consent, would that give them time to do something within the next two weeks?
No, they still have the right to delay it till, by the 60-day rule, till October, I think the 4th, it may be our first meeting is the 4th. Somebody can check, yeah, October 4th. And so it, it's one and the same. Nothing's going to change from a staff perspective in the next couple of weeks. That's, but that's up to, to you and to them.
Believe it or not, I, I have looked, read, researched and all this stuff and I'm just, I would love for it to happen, but I'm talking with the city manager and the city just is not ready. There's just too, too many points that the city's, has got to look at and I'm all for development about there, but the city's just not ready for this to happen, not, not one like this. It's just, I find it to me over and over and I've worried to death this week, but the city's just, it's just, we're just not ready. We, we, we're just not.
I'm looking for some guidance here from the council as to what y'all's determinations, you want to, how you would like to move forwards. I still sees three options.
You're also discussing and you have yet to open a public hearing.
I have, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the public hearing is not open, so.
And you're welcome to have questions of staff by your own procedures prior to open the public hearing, I want to clarify, and you don't usually do that, but yes, this is quite involved, so don't forget the public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, any thoughts? Which direction we should go? Looking for some.
Well, we still have the opportunity after the public hearing to make a motion.
No question, absolutely. We sure do. So we could just stop our discussion, go ahead and do the public hearing? Okay, then we'll do that. Then we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff. I'm TJ Johnson, I'm the applicant with Holland Homes. I address this 421 of Like a Road in Auburn, representing the Hanson and Grimes family here as well tonight. We certainly appreciate y'all's consideration. Do understand that this is a complicated matter that requires a lot of study, so just wanted to address the, the reason we were asking for a delay was to acquire sanitary sewer easements. If we don't believe that that would change anything from a staff perspective, I think what makes the most sense is, is we vote tonight. We understand that this is a, a big project, it opens up a whole section in Auburn, as Mr. Cummings mentioned. So some of those things are outside of our control. I don't know that three months or 12 would change that, so even if we were to be denied here tonight, we are still committed to this project. I know the Hanson and Grimes family are as well. We believe in West Auburn. As Ms. Crouch said, Lochepoca's committed to serve it with water. We found a sanitary sewer route we believe is viable. We understand that capacity is not just determined on our 385 lots, but, but all that, that opportunity that Mr. Cummings mentioned. So we believe this, this project is, would be awesome for the city. It's right on the proposed outer loop, so we believe there'd be great connectivity. There's water service, we could get to sewer, but again, we understand that, you know, the, the excellent staff and the Planning Commission, it's, it's outside of the current scope, but we wanted to bring it to this body and, and see what the plan is for West Auburn. It's something we believe in, we think it'd be an awesome asset, so we do appreciate your consideration. Obviously, open for any questions. The, the density and the zoning we're asking for is in line with what was approved with Wimberly Station previously. I know some time has passed. Also, Woodland Park is adjacent as well as the Orchard Way Mobile Home Park, so we didn't just pull that density out of thin air, whereas we do understand it is not in line with the current plan. We do ask this body to consider what, what's best for West Auburn moving forward. So I appreciate y'all's time and I'm, I'm open for any questions.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave, anybody got any questions? You've heard what the mayor's outlined as our three options.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the applicant's preference for how we proceed?
Uh, we believe that going to get those sewer easements may, could change things materially if we had an, an absolute route for gravity sewer to Auburn infrastructure, if we had a commitment from Lochepoca to serve it with water. Traffic is always a concern, but typically we would do a traffic study after an event like this. If we don't believe as a body that that materially changes anything, I don't see any reason to wait 90 days, to be, to be quite honest. We thought maybe going to get those could change things, but that's up to you guys and staff, and we appreciate all their work on this so far, so.
So withdrawing is not, you don't believe is an option for you right now and?
I don't, I, it's up to you guys, but and, and Ms. Crouch may can speak to that as well. I don't know that withdrawing, you know, if you, if you were denied tonight, I think 12 months is probably a, a normal life cycle to study something this big, so I don't know that withdrawing and bringing it back later really changes much. I would love to hear y'all's concerns in addition to what they've mentioned, and we're not opposed to bringing that thing back if it does come to a point where the plans change. So I don't know that 12 months changes that.
Sure.
Just from the, the scale of the ask, I guess.
And I, I do think one other thing that council, we would, we'll have to check with our legal counsel on this, if you act tonight, de facto and I'm, if this were to be denied, a, a planned development district's never going to come before you and that triggers the 12-month rule, not the rest of it. And so there may be no 12-month rule and we will check with legal counsel, but if you're not, if that application is never considered, it may trigger nothing. I can tell you that, I don't know even in 12 months, we have other things on the work program and other priorities, and this was not, Mr. Foote, was this area on any work program in the next two years to even be studied from a planning perspective?
No, it was not.
So our priorities are on many other things right now and that'll be something we'll have to talk with the governing body about, whether or not you're wanting to see, instruct me to make a material shift in plan unit development changes that we were, that's a whole new thing that we were, wanted to bring to the zoning ordinance. We also have a lot of zoning ordinance simplification, which would be welcomed by a lot of people. It is very challenging and thick that we have funded as part of the budget also, and we have other planning priorities and this was not one of them. So that, those things would have to be discussed and I'd have to get back to you as to where we stand.
I just got, just, and this may be, I just got one question to ask. What's, what's the difference between pre-zoning and rezoning?
So on the, the pre-zoning, what this means is by state law in section 115285B, and the reason I cite that is because some people, and those at home, a lot of people like to look things up and understand what our state law says, and it, what it basically says is the applicant has a right to ask for zoning before they annex. So normally you saw in a previous action with Sonic Tools that you annexed and then you zoned, but this allows them to know if they're going to have the zoning that they would prefer prior to coming into the city limits. And it, also the city has the same rights ironically that they do. We could actually change the land use plan to, to the future zoning plan if we wanted to within reason per state law and say, when this comes in, it's going to come in as X, but we happen to say all property comes in as rural. That's our, that's our choice as well. But that's something that applicants avail themselves of and it never, Planning Commission doesn't decide that, and so only, it only happens at the city council level. And it's not unusual for developments such as this, it's pretty normal.
Any other comments or questions for the representative while he's standing with us?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Mr. Hanson did a lot of great forward legwork on this project. I got the opportunity to look at the property and it's beautiful and it's, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a wonderful idea and a wonderful area. I just, I'm feeling like Councilman Dawson as well, that we just, we're, we're not, we're not up to speed with your speed, but really do appreciate the, the outreach and the real proactiveness of making those connections with us and I certainly appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, we appreciate it. Public hearing is still open. If anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions in the council?
Again, Mayor, I, I appreciate Mr. Hanson, it's a great family, they're a good Auburn family, I know that they, I know they have the right to develop like they want to, but at the meeting extensively, or talking extensively with the city manager and getting her, city's viewpoint, I just don't think we're ready. And one thing that bothers me more than anything is the amount of traffic that this would create on Willis Turk Road. One intersection, you have the railroad tracks and, and the, State 14, and it's a state road, so it would be there, the state's priority if we want to put a light up there, and there's a little bit of, I've looked at it too, there's a little bit of a dip coming into Auburn right there, it can bother, affect your line of sight. And then on the, and I've talked to some other people in the community about it, on the other end, you got Wire Road and Willis Turk Road intersection and it's, it's horrible. But I do think if we worked together with this family and, and accomplished getting some of these areas, some of these problems taken care of, I, I would welcome it back again and could support it 100%, but, and I just, I've agonized over it and thought about it, but I just in all good conscience can't say tonight I think that we're ready to do it. I just, I'm sorry to the Hanson family, but I'm just sorry, I, I can't support it right now, but, you know, it's, in the future, maybe we can make it, get to work together, make something like that happen out there. I think it's a great opportunity for that area, but I just in all good conscience can't give my okay to it tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Regardless of how this goes tonight, I, I think it's apparent that the west side of Auburn is going to develop faster, sooner than, than we anticipated, and I think the council as a whole should provide some direction to the staff on how, how we want to proceed in terms of studying this area. Obviously, the, I, I also have met with, with the city manager and, and there are a lot of questions to be answered on topography and hydrology and, and the whole flow and, and every, and traffic and the sewer systems and the whole, whole infrastructure picture. So I don't know if, if, if we need to require or request of our city manager that the priorities be adjusted to start working and focusing on this area or what the right procedure is to do that, but I would think sooner versus later is something we need to consider. Ms. Crouch, when the land use plan was put together and this area was contemplated as primarily being rural, I'm guessing those determinations were made basic, based on available infrastructure and road networks and those kind of things in the area?
They were, and as a matter of fact, the Cox Wire Road area was, was studied not all that long ago and this, that study area did not include this area, getting some, some push there based on, on changes in that area. And that's where ultimately, if I may, I would rather come to you to committee of the whole to give you guys some information about what's on our plate and a few currently, what the current situation is out here from a rural perspective, things like the outer loop you heard mentioned and other things, and give you a little more information and then get your feedback if you'd be amenable to doing a committee of the whole to learn a little more about it before we make that decision. As I also want to provide to you some other data we talked about, we're doing some updates to the comp plan now, but I want to make sure you know what's going on in the rest of the city from a, a density standpoint, and you'll have decisions to make about if you want us to study this, and once we do, you know, we'll bring the findings back to you and you can decide, and the Planning Commission can decide from there. But if you give me, we can do a committee of the whole, and I know some people may be out of town, so I'll check with you individually coming up to see when a good time to do that. I'd like to give you some more information if you're gonna, may want to choose to reset our priorities, which is absolutely your call. I want to tell you what all is on our plate so you can make an informed decision and, and guide me to guide the staff where we want to go.
I think it's a great idea. I would love to have that opportunity. I think infrastructure was number one problem on our citizen survey and I think we really, I, I guess maybe I didn't realize it was such a problem until I dealt with Mr. Hanson on this piece of property, but we really need to get together the council and, and look at our infrastructure and see what we can do to improve it, and we work hard toward getting federal money to put the outer loop in. If we're going, we're growing, we're growing unbelievable, it's, it's really unbelievable the way Auburn's growing, but we've got to do something to keep the infrastructure up. If we don't, we're neglecting our citizens if we don't do something to make some improvements.
Correct. Based on the latest census estimate, we're growing at 6.6 people a day.
So we're not doing our jobs if we don't get together and come up with a problem with the infrastructure issue.
All right.
We got a motion and a second.
Yeah, and so what we're considering here is a pre-zone, and so if this passes, we'll move on to the other items on the agenda. If this fails, then we do not consider the other items on the agenda.
That's correct.
I'll just finish up by saying we just got through, finished a municipal election. And like most of our recent municipal elections, the topic of growth was the primary topic that was discussed, and the word managed growth was utilized in many of our meetings and, and voter forums. We're hearing our staff tonight, and many of us have heard this in, in private conversations, saying that they're not ready for this development out there because the infrastructure's right there. We have, we have, we're not, if, if this were to be in play, it would be very problematic for our community and, and maybe that wouldn't be considered managed growth, I don't know. I do know that, that, that eventually this is gonna, we're gonna have to consider what's going on in West Auburn. There's just no question about that, and so getting with the staff and, and evaluating where we are and what we're doing holistically as a city is probably, it was no question an exercise that's worth doing in the very near future. Okay, any other comments from the council? Okay, all right, at this time Lindsey, we'll do the roll call.
Griswold?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Parsons?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Whitten?
Bitten?
No.
Dawson?
No, ma'am.
Nixon?
No.
No.
All right, Mayor, that item failed, and so for the record, Item 9A4 and Item 9A5, one was, 9A4 was a request to pre-zone to a planned development district, since you did not approve a rural to LDD zone in the, in, in Item 9A3, there is no reason to take on 9A4 because it is not zoned, and 9A5 was a request to annex assuming you had zoned under 9A3. So therefore, 9A4 and 9A5 will not be considered by the council this evening. Are you ready for resolutions?
Please.
Item 10A1 is a request from Auburn Self-Pour LLC on behalf of Cox Properties-AL LLC for conditional use approval of a commercial entertainment use, a lounge for property located at 200 West Glen Avenue, Suite 200 in the Urban Core Zoning District. The project is known as Auburn Self-Pour. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 8th meeting. A public hearing is required.
May I for approval?
Second. I have a motion and a second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the council? All right, all in favor?
If I may, sir.
No, great.
Ms. Crouch, have we, have we got anything to show this is being promoted as a family place type bar?
I think that is something that was in a newspaper article. I, I wouldn't, to my knowledge, and the applicant may be here, is the applicant present? It might be wise, Chief Dawson, if they speak to that at, at your discretion.
I would like to know, make sure we're not promoting, this is drinking establishment for minors.
Yeah, we'll have the applicant speak to that. I, I do believe that that came in part from a newspaper article, sir.
That's right. Good evening, everybody.
Yeah.
Deion Peoples, 23, 21 Hampshire Court, Auburn.
Thank you.
We're, we're saying it's a family establishment, is it's a place that you can bring your kids and feel comfortable, not that there's any underage drinking going on, but it's more of a all is welcome, you don't have to feel like you're at a, dare I say, Sky Bar, some kind of slower slum type bar. It's going to be high-end, high-tech, there's going to be non-alcoholic beverages available, kombuchas, sparkling waters, craft sodas, so it's not a, it's not a daycare with alcohol by any, by any stretch of the means, but more of a, a place that people with young children can feel comfortable bringing their family, having a couple of drinks, eating some food, and not be at a, you know, feel any outside pressures.
Same way if you go to a restaurant.
Correct, correct.
You're not promoting it to, for kids to come in and...
Absolutely not, and it's, the, the technology in place on it prevents that. We're going to license scan, RFID cards are required for any individual to go up to the tap and, and, and pour the beverage, so it'll be, it's actually safer than a traditional bar.
Yeah, right, it's probably better than the average security.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can you walk us through a little bit, there'll be an attendant present, correct?
Correct. Staff, instead of being behind a bar pouring the drinks, where now as the consumer will be able to pour the drinks, the staff will be there monitoring, answering questions, assisting with any questions, but eyes on consumers, seeing, you know, if there are any overconsumptions, what the system locks out after two drinks are consumed anyways, and they have to come back to the staff to be reevaluated, to activate the RFID card again, so that's primarily the staff is going to be for monitoring and assisting customers versus behind a bar pouring drinks or being preoccupied with making the beverages.
It's not a self-checkout type deal.
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, any other comments from the council? All right, we've got a motion and a second. Hold on just a second, we, we good?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I was in the right place. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Item 10A2 is a request from Brett Basquin on behalf of Lee Zhang and Nan and Liu for conditional use approval of a performance residential use and multi-unit development for property located at 1764 Miracle Road in the Development District Housing Zoning District. The project is known as Miracle Road Townhomes MUD. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 8th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Before Mr. Foot got here, Forest Cotton had the unique task, I suppose it would be called, to determine if a floor plan was a private dormitory or a, or something other than a private dormitory. Since the change in directors of our planning department, is that the same role that Mr. Foot is taking on now, that you will be the determining, determining body to determine if a floor plan is or is not a private dormitory?
Just quickly, I mean, the, what I believe Mr. Griswold is referring to is that the planning director has the sole determining authority for the zoning ordinance to determine whether something is an academic dwelling unit or any other type of housing unit, and so there was a succinct process our former planning director followed to ensure that, and I'd like Mr. Foot to explain, because he is the person that interprets the zoning ordinance by law right now, where, where he stands on this so that you have information and how the staff functions in this regard.
Thank you. So, you know, there are definitions for dormitory, there are definitions for ADDUs, and there's a process where staff looks at those items, you know, before they get to the permitting standpoint, and so, yes, my staff would be looking and working with applicants during the process, and, and they would look to make sure that everything meets those definitions. Any questions that come up, I would be the final determinant in interpreting the ordinance and making sure that we adhere to, you know, what has been approved in the past and what the code says.
Okay. Reason I ask that is, is the staff, under comments under planning, it said floor plans will need to be reviewed. I just wanted to understand the process for that, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, they are reviewed frequently because I've heard from, heard from a few citizens that don't agree with our interpretation that their proposed development includes academic dwelling units, so I definitely know that that is alive and well in the planning staff.
Thank you.
And I was about to ask that question, have, during the planning of it, did any of the citizens respond, but you just answered that question.
On this one? This one in, in general?
Yeah.
Counselperson Taylor. Mr. Foot, did any of the adjoining property owners come to the planning commission meeting?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of anyone coming to the meetings or sending us any communication in regard to this application.
Okay. Is that your, your question?
Yeah, let's see.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A3 is a request from Matt Cobb on behalf of AU Alliance LLC for conditional use approval of a commercial support use warehouse distribution facility for property located on the north side of Beehive Road and west of Auburn Technology Park West in the industrial zoning district. The project is known as Sonic Tools Warehouse Distribution Facility. The planning commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of eight to one at its August 11th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. See no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or questions from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A4 is a request from Tim Miner on behalf of Beck Bradham Incorporated for conditional use approval of a road service use, a fast food restaurant in the Comprehensive Development Zoning District located at 1521 East Glen Avenue. This project is known as Taco Bell. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this project at its September 8th meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. This time I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. See no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 10A5 is a request from Richard Tomacello on behalf of Owens Family Partnership LLC for conditional use approval of a road service use coffee shop with drive-through located on North Donahue Drive, south of Shug Jordan Parkway, and north of Ruth Way in the Comprehensive Development District Zoning District. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its September 8th meeting. A public hearing is required.
May I for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. See no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B is a request from the Auburn Housing Authority for the city to assent to the vacation of RightofWay located on Crosby Avenue and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute a quitclaim deed relinquishing the property to the Auburn Housing Authority for a housing redevelopment project. If the project does not proceed, the RightofWay will not be vacated. A public hearing is required.
May I for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. See no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I want to double-check with the city clerk. Staff is telling me in Item 9A3, there may not have been an introduction for unanimous consent, and I want to double-check that before you adjourn this meeting.
Okay. How do we need to go about doing that?
Hold on just a second, let's see what she says.
9A3?
9A3, which was the rezoning.
I have, I have it.
You have it?
Dawson and Parsons.
Okay. So that was Dawson and Parsons? David? Okay. But Lindsey, city clerk, you're good?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure before we get out of here, because one of you can always reintroduce something if we need to, to be sure we're conducting business. So those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward, give us your name and address for the record. You have three minutes, and please address your comments to the council.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Robert Wilkins, 261 Denson Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Ordinance 3288 Short-Term Rental. This mayor and the council ripped away our constitutional rights, or ripped away our property rights, and, and you mentioned property rights, I'm not sure why you agreed with that, and also our civil liberties, using a neighborhood conservation zoning as their gospel. But, but I'm not here really to talk about the travesty by the council, but I'm concerned about the decline of the Auburn council and its mayor. There's only one reason for the turnout of 3,517, 3,517 voters in the city election, over 78,000 residents, and I believe it's because they had little hope as you as representatives. We had 816 petitions, you all ignored them to wanting to amend the 3288. You also had, some of those, a lot of those people we talked to individually had no confidence in the council, and I'm concerned. I believe that things, you know, there were thousands more, thousands of more people that would have signed petitions, but you didn't care about the 816. But I have a few ideas.